Okay. I'd like to call the Monday, May 7, 2018 Oakwood City Council meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with a pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please? Lori?
Mayor Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mrs. Hilton?
Here.
Mr. Epley?
Here.
And may I have a report on our minutes of our April 2 regular work session and executive session and our April 23 work session and executive session. Mrs. Hilton?
Yes, Your Honor, I've reviewed the minutes from all five of those meetings and I've found them to be correct and complete, and therefore I move that they be adopted as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. Under Status Reports, I have a proclamation recognizing May as Motorcycle Awareness Month, whereas safety is the highest priority for streets and highways in Oakwood and throughout Ohio, whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of transportation and recreation for over 200,000 people across Ohio and millions across the nation, and whereas in an effort to make motorcycling in Ohio a safer and more enjoyable sport, motorcycling organizations from around the state are now planning a collective venture to promote motorcycle awareness. Whereas all motorcycle organizations, clubs, dealerships, groups, and highway safety officials in our state are encouraged to join Abate of Ohio Incorporated and the Motorcycle Ohio Program in actively promoting safe operation, increased rider training, improved licensing efforts, and motorist awareness, and whereas during the month of May, all roadway users should unite in a safe sharing of the roadways throughout Ohio. Therefore, be it resolved that I, William Duncan, Mayor of the City of Oakwood, do hereby urge all members of our community to join in the quest to make Ohio safe for motorcycle riders and all motorists and proclaim the month of May 2018 as Motorcycle Awareness Month. Thank you. This is the visitor section of our meeting, and if anyone wants to address council on any matters, this would be your time to come down to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and we would welcome you. Oh, come on, guys. All right, you're sure, last chance. All right, so we will close the visitor section of our meeting, and we will go to legislation. And Vice Mayor Byington has an ordinance.
Yes, Your Honor, this is an ordinance to amend Section 1 of 2018 Original Appropriation Ordinance Number 4850 to provide for the appropriation of an additional amount of $20,000 to be expended from the Law Enforcement Fund for the purpose of purchasing a vehicle for use by the city detective. This is a supplemental appropriation ordinance. In 2015, the Department of Public Safety received a tip regarding possible drug activity occurring at a residence on Acorn Drive. That tip led to a lengthy investigation led by Oakwood Detective Steve Norris and assisted by members of the Multi-Jurisdictional Tactical Crime Suppression Unit. By the spring of 2016, search warrants were executed at the Oakwood residence and another address in Beaver Creek, resulting in the arrest of two individuals and the seizure of 160 pounds of marijuana, numerous vehicles and firearms, and over $300,000 in U.S. currency. Federal law provides for the forfeiture of money that is related to certain kinds of criminal activities, including illegal drug activity. Upon forfeiture, that money is distributed among the law enforcement agencies involved in that particular case. In this case, the money was ultimately distributed to the nine agencies, and Oakwood's share of that money was $27,480.66. The Director of Public Safety has recommended that a portion of this money should be used to replace the city's detective's vehicle, which is nearing the end of its useful service life and is frequently in need of repair. The entire cost of the replacement vehicle will be paid from the forfeiture funds. However, a supplemental appropriation is necessary because that vehicle was not originally budgeted for replacement in 2018. The Safety Department and especially Detective Norris were instrumental in this investigation, and council believes that this is an appropriate use of the money. This supplemental appropriation will appropriate an additional $20,000 from our Law Enforcement Fund, and this is a first reading of this ordinance, so I won't make a motion at this time, we'll do it at our June 6 meeting.
June 4.
June 4.
All right, thank you. Mr. Stevens also has an ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. This is an ordinance levying special assessments for the improvement of certain streets between certain termini in the City of Oakwood, Ohio by lighting the same with electricity. This is the third and final step of our 2019 street lighting program and was introduced for a first reading at the April 2 council meeting. This ordinance allows for the cost of 2019 street lighting to be certified to the Montgomery County Auditor for Assessment. This is the second reading of this ordinance, and I move the council adopt it this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions for Councilmember Stevens? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Byington has another ordinance.
Yes, this one is adopting the 2019 budget for the City of Oakwood for the fiscal year beginning January of 2019, and this is basically to comply with Section 6.01 of the City Charter, which is an annual housekeeping ordinance to estimate the city's revenue and expenses for calendar year 2019. It was first introduced for a first reading in April 2 council meeting, and at this time I'd like to make a motion that we move this as adopted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion or questions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Byington has yet a third ordinance he would like to talk about.
Yeah, this is fun. An ordinance to establish procedures and standards for small cell wireless facilities and wireless support structures. This is the second reading of an ordinance that I talked about at our last meeting, to adopt regulations for small cell wireless facilities. The city law director is going to make a brief presentation, and I stress the word "brief," regarding this ordinance, and then I will make the motion afterwards.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Jackson.
You get the same treatment our city manager does. You get the same treatment our city manager does when it comes to being brief. I have done what I can to try to make small cell facilities interesting. I'm limited because of the subject material, but we'll try to do it quickly. What I'm here to talk about is small cell facilities and wireless support structures. Those are terms that now have specific meaning under Ohio law, and just briefly, I'm going to talk about the history of small cell legislation here in Ohio, House Bill 478, and then the legislation that's in front of you to vote on tonight. What do I mean when I talk about a small cell facility? On the screen in front of you, you see the definitions that have been pulled out of this latest addition to the Ohio Revise Code. The key points there, you don't have to read all that, but a small cell facility is a smaller-than-normal cell tower. It's not the 150-foot pole that we're accustomed to seeing, you know, with a big array of equipment up at the top. Small cell facilities are, by their design, they're intended to go on much smaller installations, smaller poles. Think of a typical utility pole like you might see for DPNL or telephone lines, things like that. Think about street lighting poles, and you're in the right ballpark. A small cell facility is basically a wireless transmission, you know, a collection of antennas and cables and whatnot, where the antenna element can fit within six cubic feet of space, and the other equipment that's on the pole can fit within 28 cubic feet space. Total of those would be 34 cubic feet of equipment going on a pole. When we talk about wireless support structures, we're talking about the poles that they sit on. In front of you is the definition from the statute. These are lots of words that basically mean a pole, any pole, is a wireless support structure. Okay? I have some samples of them so you can see, and I don't know how well these come through on your screens. This is an older small cell facility. I call it the spear gun type. You see this strap on the side of an existing street light. This one, which I call the up-the-pole model, this just sort of runs up the side of a pole that doesn't seem to have anything else on it other than this small cell facility. This is a little more utilitarian. It's starting to look a little more like equipment that might belong on a pole like that, although you got dangling wires and so forth, and I've seen at least one commenter call this the walrus style because of the two things that stick down there that look sort of like tusks. This is a more recent type of small cell facility where you can see at the top of the pole is the antenna, and then down lower on the pole is the cabinet of equipment that runs on, and that's on a typical street lighting pole. Here's another variation, very similar to the last one, installed on the city light pole. You don't see a lot of these around, but you're going to start seeing them much more common, because there's a big push to start putting these up here in Ohio. The push for small cells in Ohio is primarily driven by demand. If you think about how many, you know, the data devices that we all carry, whether it's our phones, our iPads, tablets, laptops, you name it, and when you're home or you're at work and you have a Wi-Fi network to use, you get your data that way, but anywhere else, you know, we just think of our, we're using our cellphone data plan, we don't think about where that data comes from, and increasingly, it's going to come from these small cell facilities. Interesting statistic I found, and this is according to AT&amp;T, there has been, in the last 10 years, there has been a 250,000 percent increase in data, cellphone-type data plans. 250,000 percent increase. What we're talking about with these small cells is the next-gen or 5G network that they're trying to put together for cellphones and related devices. First attempt to regulate these in Ohio was a couple of years ago, it was called Senate Bill 331. It was passed in late 2016, took effect in March of 2017, and you may remember, this was a classic log-rolling kind of thing, where you had a bill, and we called it the Petland Bill, because this was about regulating the sale of dogs and regulating the licensure of pet stores and things like that, and late in the session, all of a sudden, the legislators started putting other amendments in there. One of them was to put a whole regulatory framework for small cell wireless into this otherwise pet-oriented bill. Some other ones had to do with things like minimum wages in Cleveland and a number of other things, but they were putting everything into this bill to try to get passed, and they did, and that led to a lot of litigation. The City of Oakwood joined with a number of other cities to challenge Senate Bill 331. The lawsuit that we were part of was one of several that were happening throughout the state. Big problems with Senate Bill 331, other than the unconstitutional way in which it was enacted, are that Senate Bill 331 would strip virtually all local control over these small cell wireless facilities. They'd be allowed to put them wherever they want, we would have nothing to say about it, we couldn't tell them what it could look like, where it could be, anything, and that was Senate Bill 331. While all this litigation is going on, the legislators, I think, saw the writing on the wall and decided they wanted to take another crack at this, and so they came up with the House Bill 478. That was introduced just this year, January 23 of this year, and when they introduced it, they already had a mostly fully-formed piece of legislation ready to start debating. And the reason for that was that there was a lot of collaboration that went on between when Senate Bill 331 was adopted and when House Bill 478 was introduced. That collaboration involved the telecom companies, it involved legislators at the General Assembly, it involved the Ohio Municipal League, a number of other, what I'll call stakeholders, including, you know, MBCC participated in a number of those conference calls and some of the collaboration. They wanted to get something that was going to be acceptable to municipalities and to the telecoms that wasn't going to result in all the litigation that we saw around 331. It was introduced in January of this year, and it was almost immediately fast-tracked because it was pretty much ready to go. Introduced on January 23, by April 11, it had passed both houses, and it was just signed by Governor Kasich on May 2, take effect later this summer at the end of July. What does House Bill 478 do? And you'll see this list here we're going to talk about, but bear in mind that Senate Bill 331 is already in effect. That was the earlier legislation, that's already passed and taken effect. Senate, or House Bill 478 takes that and builds on it and adds some modifications, in some cases that are beneficial to municipalities, in some cases not. The short version is, House Bill 478 gives the city additional time to review applications. When someone wants to install one of these small cell facilities, we'll have 120 days to review the application for a new pole. It caps the amount that we're allowed to charge for an application fee at $250. It caps the amount that we can charge for annual rental for someone who wants to locate on a pole that's owned by the city, we can charge them no more than $200. Interesting side note is that cap does not apply if they want to rent poles from DPNL or someone else that has a pole in their right-of-way. So my guess is that that's going to funnel most of the applications our way wanting to locate on our poles because they're cheaper. House Bill 478 puts a limit on the number of applications that can be filed at once. They can consolidate up to 30 together and file those all together. They have to be substantially similar to each other, it can't be 30, you know, widely differentiated applications that they're filing. If they want to file more than 30, they can, but we'll get additional time to review those and approve them. House Bill 478 also lowers the maximum height of the pole from 50 feet to 40 feet, which, just to put that in perspective, the more traditional cell towers that you see are typically 120, 140, 160 feet tall, so these are quite a bit smaller. And the key here with House Bill 478 is it does allow the city to adopt reasonable written design guidelines, and that's something that was missing from Senate Bill 331. There are certain things that we can't do under 478, and we couldn't do it under Senate Bill 331 either, and these are important to point out. We're not allowed to require the applicant to submit information about their services, customer demand, the quality of service to or from a particular area of site. We're also not allowed to require them to justify the need for a particular facility. We don't get to ask, we don't get to review their data to confirm for ourselves that, yes, in fact, you need an additional cell tower in this location. If they want to put one up, we have to allow them to put one up, which ties into the third one that you see on the list there. We're also not allowed to impose a moratorium. We have to allow these things. Part of my text disappeared. I don't know why I decided to do that. Again, key points here, and this is taken straight from the language of the statute. The operator may, as a permitted use, not subject to zoning review or approval, co-locate a small cell facility and construct, maintain, et cetera, the other equipment that goes with it. They are allowed to put these up, we are not allowed to hold them up through any kind of zoning review or something, which is what we would normally do with a traditional cell tower, and we have a whole Section 403 in our zoning code. You may remember Verizon, a camera, a couple of years ago, wanted to put one up here, and we went through that whole process with the planning commission. The other thing is that the municipal corporation shall permit, consistent with the legislation, we shall permit them to locate their facilities here. So the ordinance that you have in front of you tonight is our effort to adopt the design and procedural and design guidelines we're allowed to adopt under House Bill 478. This was a, the ordinance in front of you was a collaborative effort. I participated, along with Ethan Kroger, who's the city's code enforcement officer. We participated in a series of meetings with MBCC, and those meetings involved not just the eight MBCC member communities, but an expanded pool of cities from all around the area. I think we had, at different meetings, we had anywhere from 20 to 25 communities represented, discussing what was happening in the state bill and working on a shared set of desired guidelines that we would try to use throughout the greater Dayton region, so that this would be a uniform kind of approach, and the telecoms know what to expect as they go to each municipality applying for these things. But again, the ordinance in front of you, it establishes a procedural framework, the design and siting requirements, and then also, you're going to have another piece of legislation tonight that has to do with undergrounding, and I'll talk about that briefly in this presentation as well. Just so you understand what I'm talking about, when I say procedural framework, we now have, we're adopting the timelines that the state law sets forth for submission of a few of applications, for the issuance of permits for providers who want to put these things up. We've also adopted, or put procedures in there for appeals, for maintenance of these facilities, for removal of abandoned facilities, which would have to be done by the provider and so forth. When we talk about design and siting requirements, what we're talking about are the location of any ground-mounted facilities that they're putting up, the location of any small cell facilities up on a wireless support structure, the appearance and concealment of these facilities, and then the design and appearance of the poles themselves. Before I leave this slide, let me just talk about the undergrounding, because that'll tie into the other resolution we have before each night. There is a provision in House Bill 478 that says that we are, as a city, are allowed to require small cell providers to put utilities underground. That's something, an inherent power that the city has in regulating its rights away. We can require the utilities to be located underground, but the telecom companies have been very concerned, they want to be treated no different than any other utility, no other, no different than any other provider that we have in our right-of-way. And so what this law says is that we can tell them to underground their utilities, but only if we require that for all utilities in a particular area. And so the resolution that you'll be discussing tonight is an attempt to do just that. It identifies areas of the city, not by a map, but with words, it talks about allowing or requiring undergrounding in any area of the city in which we don't already have overhead utilities. I know some areas along Ridgeway Road are included in that, and there are some other pockets throughout the city where we don't already have overhead utility. This resolution will ensure that it stays that way. And then we've also written in there undergrounding requirements, if that's required by a condo association or homeowner's association, or if it's required in connection with a particular kind of public improvement. If we're requiring other utility companies to be underground, small cell facilities will also have to put their facilities underground. So I want to just hit some of the highlights on the design guidelines that you have in front of you, and I've done this, in the interest of being short, I'm just kind of compiled a list of the key ones. There will be no more than two facilities per pole, but up to two can be on any pole. Small cell facilities are not allowed to have lights on them unless those lights are required by the Federal Communications Commission or the Federal Aviation Administration. So for the most part, there won't be any lights on them. That does not include, if they mounted on a city street light, for example, obviously there's going to be a street light head there, but no lights that are part of their facilities. The city has the right to propose an alternate location. If the provider comes and applies they want to put a pole in a particular location, the city can say, "We'd like you to use a different spot," and not the one you've chosen. It has to be within 100 feet of the location they've chosen, and the design guidelines that you have, they actually lay out a hierarchy of preferences in order. If they propose a new location, you know, the first, or the most, what's the word I'm looking for? The most desirable choice for an alternate location would be an existing pole in an existing utility easement. And if there isn't something like that available within 100 feet, then you go to the next one. Maybe it's an existing pole in an alley, and so on and so forth down the list to help try to define where those will go. Next is that any new wireless support structure must be 1,230 feet away from the nearest existing small cell facility. Now, that spacing requirement only applies if they want to put in a new pole to support something. If they want to use an existing pole, that spacing requirement doesn't apply, but the state law does allow us to specify spacing when there's a new pole going in, and that's what we've done. 1,230 feet is a little less than a quarter of a mile, it's two and a half blocks, roughly, just to give you an idea of the distance. The 40-foot height maximum, that I already mentioned, and then we've specked out certain materials in here. The standard materials that are in the ordinance before you tonight would be to put up a 12-inch diameter pole made out of aluminum. It could be either that raw spun aluminum finish, or if they're going to paint it, we want them to paint it the same Oakwood blue that we've used on the decorative lighting poles in the Business District, which I learned has its own Sherwin-Williams color code, it's SW2739 if you want to buy some. We call it Oakwood blue, they call it charcoal blue. But if, for some reason, someone wants to put a pole in a location, and that raw aluminum pole or the blue pole would stand out like a sore thumb, because let's say it's in a block where there are already a bunch of black poles or a bunch of green poles, there is some flexibility in there to allow them to match the character of the area so that we don't have those standouts. And that's really it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those at this time.
Do we have any questions for law director? All right. I think you still have the floor, Mr. Byington.
Oh, yes. Very good presentation, and I was joking about the brief thing. I always said that because we've already discussed this at length in our work session, so the public got the 15-minute version, we got the hour-and-a-half version, so this, let's see, where am I at here? This was the second reading of this ordinance, and I move that council adopt it tonight.
Is there a second? Second. Any other discussion or questions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton, excuse me? Yes, Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And then finally, Vice Mayor Byington has a resolution as our city law director talked about.
Yes, this was a resolution designating certain areas within the city as strictly for underground or buried utilities. It's related to the small cell wireless regulations that we just discussed. Under House Bill 478, small cell wireless providers can be required to place the, place facilities underground, but only in specific areas that the city designates as being strictly for underground or buried utilities, and only if those requirements apply to all utility providers and not just small cell wireless providers. The purpose of this resolution is to adopt underground requirements for the city that generally preserve the status quo. In other words, council will require the underground, undergrounding of utilities, including small cell wireless facilities, in all areas of the city that do not currently have overhead utilities. We would also require undergrounding in areas where undergrounding is necessary for a particular public improvement project or where it is required by a condo or homeowner's association. I move that council adopt this resolution this evening.
We have a second.
Second.
Any other questions or comments for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none, then Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our legislation. We have a staff report by our finance director, Cindy Stafford, and for the students that are out visiting, I'd give you a heads-up, there will be a test on this material. Welcome, Cindy.
Hopefully you brought your calculators.
Thank you, and good evening, mayor, council, staff. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on where things stand with the Finance Department and with the finances of the city, with that. What I want to talk to you a little bit about tonight is the 2017 where we ended the year, the audit that is currently happening, and as well as giving you an update on the 2018 year-to-date financials through April 30. This graph, it's like I'm missing the top of it, for, I just want to point out, when you look at this graph, the gold bars on there are the budget, that's these ones here. What's buried in the expense numbers on those are actually the same type of report that is on our website that I present to council on a monthly basis. What it does is it takes the current year budget and it adds to it any items that we would have carried over from the prior year, things that, projects that we were in the middle of, expenditures that happened at year-end that we hadn't paid for yet. So those purchase orders are carried over into the next year, and this is a common practice done by everybody. So this number, if you were to look at this number and compare it to that budget line item, what you would see is it would be just about $496,000 more than the budget that was approved in 2017. And again, those items are just expenditures, checks that we wrote, the city wrote during 2017 on prior-year purchase orders. This slide, along with any of the other slides I show, kind of have the same type of data. We do that because, from an accounting standpoint, if you write it in your checkbook and you write it in January, but it was for something that you contracted to have done at your house in December, it's in your 2017 budget. You paid for it in 2017. So that's how we look at it, and that's how this, these slides are designed. With that in mind, where did we end of the year? Well, we ended the year in a very strong financial position. If you look at general fund balances at the end of the year, we were at $7.65 million. General city service funds, which for '17 included the refuse fund, we ended the year at $11.86 million. And if you look at where we actually, our expenditures ended up for 2017, and you think about the fact that we ended the year with a general fund of $7.65, that's at least 50 percent of 50% of the expenditures for that year. So we are starting 2018, obviously, in a very good position. If you compare the budgeted numbers between the two, the 13-4 and the 14-3, what you're looking at there is about $873,000 difference between what we budgeted and what we actually saw come in during the year in 2017. I always say with a caveat, when we budget, we budget very conservatively, and when I look at the numbers and we look at those, we kind of tend to kind of take down the revenue numbers and do the same thing with the expenditures. We give them a little bit of cushion in there because we don't want to have to come back to council every month in order to be able to say, "Well, we had this expenditure, went over this line, so we need to appropriate some more." And usually, when I do that budgeting, I'm looking at somewhere between a 2 and a 3% number in there. So with that said, our receipts being $873,000 more than budget, the biggest piece of that in 2017 was income taxes. And with income taxes, we, along with the preparers, as well as those who are trying to budget on the other side of the revenues coming in, are still trying to get a handle on House Bill 5, its impact, how it's impacting us. But on the opposite side, we also see preparers and those who are actually paying the tax trying to figure out how they're going to estimate and what they're going to do. And with that said, what we, what we're seeing right now is the withholding and the estimates coming in much higher. Those are timing differences, and so what we saw at the end of 2017 is individuals making estimates in preparation for 2018. And you can kind of see that, get to the slide, and you'll see that in this slide as well. You'll see, you'll see, what happens is the end of the year, in that April, you'll see that number jump up. Part of that is because our biggest collections are in the month of April and May, but also because we're seeing people paying those estimates for the next year. So some of that's a timing difference, and we attribute about $360,000 of that additional tax monies coming in related to withholdings and estimates. In addition to last year, we received about $75,000, again, for a worker's comp rebate. It's amazing, it just shows up, and those are our monies that have been collected, and when they realize that they've got a surplus, then they give those back. Last year's was $75,000. My understanding is that we're supposed to get some more of that this year as well. In addition to that, in those numbers is also a grant that the courts were able to get, $117,000 to cover some soft, a new software that they wanted for their department, so that worked out well. If you look at the disbursements, there's, there's a difference of about $570,000 between what we budgeted and where we ended the year. The biggest piece of that has to do with health insurance. When we pull this budget together, we're in that October, November timeframe, so we try and do a good estimate on what we think health insurance costs are going to be. This year, we were off by about $128,000 in what we estimated. We don't really find out what our actual health insurance cost is going to be until the latter part of December. So it makes it difficult to try and project that because it is such a tough number to project. If you look at what's the rest of the difference in there, and I go back to the 3%, 2% to 3% that I talked about, when I tried to come up with anything that was large enough to be able to say, "This is why," the only thing I could come up with is we didn't buy any road salt last year. That was a $60,000 item. So that was probably one of the biggest ones. Everything else was just a lot of little things that kind of added up to that savings. But with that caveat, I would say that it's really the due diligence and the fact that staff really acknowledges the fact that we have to be careful stewards of the tax dollars that we're given. So because of that, we spend a lot of time, staff does, making sure that the expenditures are appropriate, that we've gotten the best amount for our dollar that we can get. So I would say kudos to staff for the, for that extra, that saving, that 2% to 3% that we put in our budget on a yearly basis. Any questions on '17?
I had one question on income tax.
Okay.
Is my recollection correct that in January of '17, people were making their fourth-quarter estimate for '16, and then in '17, they made their fourth-quarter estimate in December of '17?
That is correct.
So that would account for a slightly higher increase in tax receipts in '17?
That is correct, and that was part of the federal law changes.
And we're going to give some of that back here in '18 when you get to there. Is that right?
Yes, we are seeing a drop.
It's timing.
It's timing.
Okay.
And that's what a lot of, I think, trying to wrap our heads around the impact of the new 718, and then on top of that, we throw into the net profits returns that are now being handled by the state and a 1% fee being taken from the taxes that are paid on those returns. It's very hard to get our handle, handle around what those numbers are going to be so that we can actually come up with a number to project, just because every time you turn around, we think we have it, and then we get another curveball thrown at us. So it's, it's, we're working on it. We're trying to come up with a model that we can rely on. We really thought maybe '19 would be that year that we would be able to really understand the NOL pieces and some of the other pieces that are going to kind of help, hit us over the next couple of years. Unfortunately, now we'll deal with the net profit returns being handled, some of those who choose to have those handled by the state. So yes, so that's, that's been a struggle, and will continue, at least for another couple of years, as we try and figure out how to budget income taxes.
Okay.
Could I make one comment, Your Honor? Just in response to what you just said about 2017 collections, you know, evidence of that is that right now, year-to-date through April, we're about 6% below this time last year. So we had, we got that, that extra quarter, I guess, back in '17.
At the end of the year, yeah.
And again, it's all a timing thing, is Cindy.
And we, and we have the effect that with Dayton and Moraine raising their rates, you know, we continue to have lost revenue because of that, which will hopefully get addressed here when we do our 2019 budget.
Yes.
Okay.
And I think if, if anybody is really kind of interested to see what happened at the end of December in the push with not only income taxes, but property taxes, if you take a look at our January financial statements that are out on, out on the website, you'll notice, and if I remember correctly, I want to say it was $300,000 to $400,000 of additional property tax that was actually collected in December for 2018 that we, and so we have this big spike in income taxes, or, no, I'm sorry, income, property taxes, but by the end of the year, you'll see that that was all timing. And you can clearly see that on one of our charts that we post on our website.
And that was in response to the federal government changing the tax law, limiting the deductibility of state and local taxes.
To 10 grand, that is correct.
To 10,000, right.
And as we kind of close the door on 2017, oh, before we do that, let's talk about water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater. Those finished the year in a good, strong position as well. Our goal in those cases is to make sure that both the water and the sanitary sewer fund are roughly around $1 million, and both of those funds at the end of '17 were in that position. So we were very happy with the fact that those were. And again, the gold bars, the gold bar that's up here does include carryovers from 2016, and those carryovers are roughly $307,000. So again, if you're adding up the budget numbers to try and tie to that number, you'll need to consider that. We are in the process of completing the audit for 2017. The fieldwork is finished. Again, we had Platten, Bergen Associates who have come out to do our audit. At this point in time, they have not made me aware of any issues that they found, so I do anticipate an unqualified or a clean opinion. We expect, or my expectation is that the report will be done in the next eight weeks. It is due by the state of Ohio by May 31st, so what they'll usually do is give me a pretty clean draft of the report. I, in turn, input that into a system for the state of Ohio. Again, I expect them to be completely done in eight weeks, so I'm excited about that to kind of close '17 and move on to 2018. These numbers represent year-to-date. This is the general city services fund. I think, Rob, I, when I, you, I, you put the spread column, so I'm missing my top columns on mine, and I didn't change that formatting on there. This is actually year-to-date. These are general city services. In 2018, we've actually pulled the refuse fund out of these. We did that because we want to look at the refuse fund, similar to how we look at water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater. In that sense, we're looking at it as an enterprise fund, that it's to balance the, to break even so that services balance out the cost of those, the costs associated with that fund. If we look at where we are at 20, in April of 2018, we anticipate that we should be about 33% of budget. The number that would show up down here at the bottom is about 42% of revenue collections year-to-date. So we're a little above where we would be at this time of the year, but part of that is because, again, income taxes, we collect April, or the bulk of our income taxes in April and May, and this, this actually shows that clearly. You can see the bump. You see fairly similar gaps in between January, February, March, and then a big gap in, in April. You'll see that same type of gap in May, showing those collections. And again, the 2016 blip was the estimated taxes that, that folks were paying as we moved into '17 because the changes in House Bill, or the, because of House Bill 5. When it comes to expenditures, we're also following right in line with where we anticipate to be at this time of the year. It's slightly below. The number is actually 29%. And you'll see that number pick up as we get through the summer months and our capital projects fall into play and we start paying for the capital projects that we have planned This is the refuse fund. The revenues versus budget are about 35%. The reason being for that is because of the way we collect property taxes. Same thing on the general city services. Property taxes, obviously, we pay them. It's a factor of how we pay them. We pay them in February and July. So we, as the city, get February's payments in April, and we get July's payments in September, unless you prepay, and then we get those on a monthly basis, which is why we got the big jump in January, because people prepaid and we get those turned over to us usually the next month. In addition, when the county does the tax bill in February, they also include any assessments. 100% of your assessments are in the February bill versus your July bill. So when you're paying those, you're also paying the assessments. Yes, that's how it works.
What's that have to do with refuse?
Well, because any, any refuse that we certified that did not get paid in 2017 was certified in 2018. So the, about the biggest difference in there is about a 2% increase that we see because we received 100% of assessments in the month of April. So, and expenditures, I don't have a picture of it, but I think it was real close to 33%, 34% for refuse. So we were right along with budget. We get to water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater. Again, all three of those fall right in line with budget, where we expect to be, the 33% budget at this point in time. And again, as we kind of go through, the end of 2018, I expect everything to just kind of fall in line, at least it looks to be that way at this point in time. Before I go forward, I never put jokes in here, but I accidentally made a copy of this because Norv, and Norv happened to see it, and he thought it was a little, was it funny?
I told her to put it in, leave it in here.
So this is, of course, Dilbert, and of course, believe it or not, it is budget time at the city of Oakwood. 2019's budget has started. As I start my process, I've already started rolling the documents over, started rolling 2019's documents. We will actually have our first budget review committee on May 24th, and for those who don't know, the budget review committee is a group of 35 dedicated residents who come for four meetings a year to listen to us talk about the budgets and our plans. They help steer us, they give us guidance, and they are a wonderful group of individuals who come and, and are, we're very grateful for the advice that they've given us over the years. So that first meeting is May 24th, and we'll also, as a staff, be knee-deep in our capital budget planning as we look forward to 2019. One of the things that I purchased when I started here a little over, or just about 10 years ago, because again, coming into this, I was new to the governmental arena, I bought this little budget book, and it's the little budget book, A Portable Budgeting Guide for Local Government. I kind of laughed because I do actually pull it out each year, but only because in the front of each of the chapters, there's a bunch of quotes, and it kind of gets me geared up. And so there's a couple of quotes that I like. The one says, "The basic law of budgets, you can only spend it once," just as a reminder. There's one in "preparing budgets" that says, "In most governments, the budget preparation period is an exciting, if frustrating, time, and participants tend to feel an enhanced sense of importance." Because everybody, every department thinks that their, their need is greater. So then finally, when we get to the analyzing the budget, that's, that's the goal that we have, and that's to distribute the dissatisfaction uniformly on all departments. So I keep this, and I pull it out, I mark my little tabs. And so with that, I'd just like to say thank you to my staff. I couldn't be standing here without them behind me. And so again, I want to thank Alice Young, my finance, my assistant finance director, Linda Merker, the tax administrator, and all our accounting clerks, Teresa Rushlow, Tracy Martin, Stacy Vrelin Mathis, and Tracy Davidson, because they're the ones that really do the heavy lifting on a day-to-day basis.
Great. Well, thank you, Cindy. Does anybody have any other questions or comments?
No, thanks.
All right. We, we obviously appreciate all your efforts and, and.
Well done.
It sounds like, it looks like Chairman Myles' little red book there is what you have, so, okay. Well, very good. Thank you very much for your presentation. It is now time for our city manager's report. Mr. Croft?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor.
Does anyone here doubt that whether Cindy enjoys her work or not?
No.
I think she could have spoken for two hours about.
Accounting is fun, easy, and creative.
She continues to do a fantastic job for us, as, we'll see when the, when the audit report comes out. Just a few quick comments this evening. In terms of construction, we're entering the kind of peak period here. Cindy mentioned the finance part of that, and we will, in fact, make a number of larger payments over the next three or four months for these projects, but the, just to review the, the major ones at this point, the Schaefer Park Tennis Court project started about a week ago with some preliminary work, but the, the major construction, starting with the demolition of the old facility, will take place this week, and then in the ensuing three months roughly, there'll be a lot of activity around the OCC, Collingwood, Shance, Patterson, that whole area. So the Public Works Department through Tom Long will keep a close eye on the project. Public Safety Department will visit the site daily. Of course, we're opening Gardner Pool here in a few, in a couple of weeks, three weeks. And so a lot of activity there and a lot of construction going on amongst it, but it's a real important project, and we hope to have it completed right about the time that the high school tennis team needs to jump on there and start their 2018 season. The Vectren gas line repair project, their, their major construction project this year is on East Drive, and that is scheduled to begin right after that day in May, which is coming up here in a week and a half. So the last week in May, we should start seeing some heavy activity on East Drive between Schroyer and Schaefer. So there'll be a major trench dug there and a pipe, new pipe installed. Our annual concrete project, sidewalk curb, driveway aprons, that sort of thing, is scheduled to start in mid-June, and that'll continue on through the rest of the. to start in mid-June, and that'll continue on through the rest of the summer into early to mid-September. And then our asphalt repaving project is scheduled to begin on or about the week of July ninth, and that typically is about a two-week project, and folks on the streets affected by that have, have already received notification. Our leaf mulch program, believe it or not, is almost over. This Saturday is the final day for it, and the first couple of weeks were slow, but boy, this past Saturday, we delivered a lot of mulch, and there's a little bit of a fee for that, and a lot of people came to the yard and picked it up. In fact, if you look in the yard right now, the, the three bins that are full of that leaf mulch are empty. So we basically ran out this weekend.
Oh, wow.
But we've got another load coming for the final week on Saturday, and again, if you come to the yard between eight in the morning and two in the afternoon, it's free of charge. You have to, you know, haul it yourself and, and, and all that, but it's, it's a great deal, and it's a good product. The Public Safety Department, with the, finally, the improving weather here, is going to start their, their Bike Patrol program again, so encourage our citizens to, you know, not only keep an eye out for the, the public safety officers on the bikes, but interact with them, and that's, that's part of why they, they get out of the cruisers and, and, you know, use that alternate mode of transportation, so to speak. So that'll, and I know Chief Hill is going to put some renewed emphasis on that program, so we should be seeing a bit more of that during the spring, summer, and fall. And then I mentioned Gardner Pool. Carol and her staff are doing a great job of preparing the pool, and we'll be filling it shortly and firing up the heaters and, you know, the Saturday before Memorial Day, one way or another, that pool's going to open, and the, the water is typically not at, you know, comfortable temperature at that point in time, but the, that doesn't stop the first kids from, you know, gleefully jumping in, so that is coming. And then also the, the annual blanket concerts, that's, those are going to pick up again, June, July, and August. They'll be in the June, July Oakwood scene, little write-ups on them and the dates for them, there are three Sunday dates. Those are free of charge, are really neat programs, and they're in that beautiful setting of, of Smith Gardens. In my last comment, I had the honor of attending an event yesterday at the Dayton VA, and that is truly a gem here, that, that Dayton VA Hospital Center in the, in the greater Dayton region, and frankly, in the state of Ohio. And the, the special event was to honor a Medal of Honor winner who happened to be coming to Ohio to, just to pay a visit here, and some folks were made aware of his, his trip up here and held a beautiful, roughly hour-long event for him, and if I, if I could, let me just read a couple of short things about this gentleman. It's Sergeant First Class Melvin Morris. He was born in January, on January seventh, nineteen forty-two, in Oklahoma, where he grew up. In nineteen fifty-nine, he joined the Oklahoma Army National Guard, and soon afterward, joined the active-duty Army, and he was quoted as saying, "Being in the military was better than being in trouble." Very humble man. He excelled in the military, became one of the first Army Green Berets in nineteen sixty-one, and volunteered to go to Vietnam and served two tours there. He was recognized for his valorous actions on September seventeen, nineteen sixty-nine, while commanding the Third Company, Third Battalion of the Fourth Mobile Strike Force near Chi Long. Then a Staff Sergeant, he led in advance across enemy lines to retrieve a fallen comrade and single-handedly destroyed an enemy force that had pinned his battalion from a series of bunkers. He, Staff Sergeant Morris at the time, was shot three times as he ran back towards friendly lines with the American casualties, but did not stop until he reached safety. So that was in September of sixty-nine, he was shot three times. In April of seventy, he was awarded then the Distinguished Service Cross, which is the second-highest military medal that can be won. And shortly thereafter, he volunteered to go back for his second tour in, in Vietnam. And then in 2014, a review of the award was completed, and it was upgraded from the Distinguished Service Cross to, to the Medal of Honor. And I could speak much longer about this. I have a photo, I've actually met the gentleman, remarkable man. Again, as I say, very humble, and my four years at the Military Academy, five years on active duty in the Army, the, in all those nine years, I never had the honor of shaking an individual that was awarded the Medal of Honor, but I, I had that privilege yesterday, and it was really something. And one thing I didn't know is, at present now, there are only seventy-one living recipients of the Congressional Medal of Honor, so. And one parting comment here, he, he, he made a, he spoke, obviously, to the group there yesterday, and, and one thing he said is that this is not an award you win, but this is a recognition for action you take, and he spoke for a few minutes about the, the responsibility that he feels, and he believes every Medal of Honor recipient for wearing that. You know, he's carrying that as a responsibility to, to others and to communicate as best he can, you know, what he went through, and, and he'd be a role model for others, so just a really, really neat individual.
Thank you for your reports. Anybody have any questions or comments for, for City Manager?
Real quick, at the Schaefer Park Tennis Courts, if I'm not mistaken, you can clarify, that's our oldest city-owned property that has not been renovated? Am I saying that correctly?
That, that's correct. Carol is not here tonight, but I, I'll say that she's been on staff for forty-three years, way older than these folks sitting here, and those courts were already at least ten, fifteen years old when Carol got here. So as best as we can track them, they were built sometime in the early to mid-sixties.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, at that, at this point, we have council comments. Councilmember Epley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have no comments tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Hilton?
I do not have any comments tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor. First thing, Saturday, May nineteenth, is that day in May, and at the high school, where it always is, and, you know, brought to you by the Oakwood Rotary Club, with a lot of good support from the, the city. In the morning, we'll have the, the race and the pancake breakfast, the silent auction, and then the afternoon gets kicked off with the parade and the children's games, and, you know, there's lemon shakeups, and I believe there's food again this year. It, it's a great event for, you know, citizens who've been here a long time, and then obviously, I encourage all new residents to come out. It's, it's a fun day. I've always said it's the largest collection of Oakwood residents at any one time on that one day in May, so it's always a, a pleasure to see all those kids and families running around, so it's, it's a nice event. Hope everyone can join us this year. And then the final thing is I'd like to congratulate the class of 2018 from Oakwood High School. They'll be graduating on Tuesday, May twenty-ninth, and I just wish them all the best in college or wherever they choose to go on their next, next adventure.
Great. Vice Mayor Barrington?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that, I guess it's Saturday, May twelfth, is the seventeen, seventeenth Annual Care Walk. It's five K through the city of Oakwood in support of breast cancer awareness, so.
Great, and you will be attending that?
I will be attending, yes.
Two weeks ago, the, Angela Byers, who's the Special Agent in Charge of the Cincinnati Division of the FBI, sent a letter to Chief Allen Hill, and I'd like to read this letter for the record. "On behalf of the Cincinnati Division of the FBI, I am writing to express my sincere gratitude and appreciation for the significant contributions of Lieutenant Chuck Bellage in furtherance of the FBI Cincinnati Division SWAT Team's Emergency Medical Responder Course from April nine through April thirteen in Kettering, Ohio. Lieutenant Bellage demonstrated a high level of dedication, professionalism, and expertise through his instruction during the course. The FBI SWAT program places safety as one of its highest priorities due to regularly working in dangerous tactical environments. The seventeen newly-trained EMRs will be able to provide immediate life-saving care and now have the knowledge and skills necessary to provide immediate life-saving interventions while awaiting additional EMS resources to arrive at a scene. This certification is extremely important to the continued success and safety of the FBI SWAT operators. Please extend my personal thanks to Lieutenant Bellage for his dedication and service, and on behalf of City Council, we echo the thoughts of Special Agent Byers." That's all that I have. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, June four, 2018. Hopefully, you guys will be graduating, and you can come back and visit us on your own time, right? Okay, our meeting's adjourned. Thank you for coming.